Welcome to the East Greenwich Forum. I'm Chad Hindman, host of the Morning Edition Show on the Publix Radio formerly known as Rhode Island Public Radio. I'm honored to moderate this evening's forum of the town of East Greenwich and Town Council candidates. This is the third and final Candidates Forum presented by the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce and East Greenwich News for the 2018 election. New England Technology, New England Institute of Technology was the gracious host for the earlier forums. In anticipation of a larger turnout, though, we shifted to the high school here. We're pleased to announce the East Greenwich Rotary Club is helping to sponsor tonight's forum. And a note on Rotary Club tradition, they'll put on an Election Day breakfast honoring the East Greenwich first responders. The breakfast is Election Day, Tuesday, November 6th, from 6:30 in the morning till 9:00 at St. Luke's Parish House. Tickets, six dollars. The breakfast is complimentary for East Greenwich police, firefighters, and their spouses. And you can pick up an Election Day breakfast flyer outside the auditorium. You will have another opportunity to hear from the candidates. That will be presented by members of the East Greenwich High School Civic Action Club on Wednesday, October 24th, at 6:30 PM at St. Luke's Church. New England Institute of Technology student Lucas Anagastopoulos is videotaping tonight's forums. They will be available via East Greenwich News for future viewing. The forums also, the forums are also being livestreamed on the East Greenwich News Facebook page. And thanks to all the volunteers that are helping with the livestream, with the AV, and the timekeeping tonight. So we now begin the Town Council portion of tonight's forum. Members of the East Greenwich Rotary Club previously picked names. The order of opening and closing statements has thus been predetermined, and the candidates are seated in this order. So welcome candidates, Charles Calanan, Mark Schwager, Mike Donigan, Mike Zarella, Renew Engelhardt, Bill Higgins, Sean O'Leary, Andy Deutsch, Sue Sianke, and Karen Correnthal. The format for the Town Council Forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to make an opening statement. And they've all been asked ahead of time to include what they think is the most pressing issue facing our town. Following this, each candidate gets one question and up to three opportunities to weigh in on questions that are asked of other candidates. We will keep track of the number of responses from each candidate, allowing up to 90 seconds for those. And we can, you can actually use all three of your responses in one response if you get into a back and forth and one follow-up. But just be aware that every time you use another response, that will count against your three, so you could use them all up. And we also ask candidates to focus on the questions that are asked and try to refrain from revisiting a former topic, and if necessary, include that topic in your closing statement. After the questions, we will give time for minutes, have a lightning round, including up to three questions with very short answers. Candidates will be alerted that their time is up if they reach 20 seconds with those. And then to wrap up, candidates will be given up to 90 seconds for closing statements in the same order that they did their opening statements in the beginning. Tonight's forums are designed as a public service to benefit East Greenwich residents. The objective is to allow the candidates to express their views on issues facing our town and to allow the public to hear those views. We ask that the audience give the candidates and fellow audience members the quiet and respect to be fitting these objectives. This isn't a contest. There are no prizes awarded tonight than always on Election Day in November 6th. Tonight is for listening. We also ask the audience, if any time during the forum you need to leave for any reason, when you exit, try and close the doors quietly and try not to speak too loudly out in the hallway. One final note for the candidates, our timers are sitting right in the front row, and they will hold up a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left and then when your time is up. And also if or when a candidate has reached their three response limit. With all of that, let's begin with opening statements. We will start with Charles Calanan. Need some volume? Hear that, but I don't hear you. How about that? That better? Yeah. How about more?
How's that? Good evening. Thank you all for arriving here this evening, and it's a pleasure to come out here and have a chance to speak to you. My name's Charles Calanan, as I mentioned. I am a graduate of Villanova University. I entered the United States Navy as a naval officer, served for 15 years. I had tours in places from Navy Criminal Investigative Service. I worked in the Anti-Terrorism Division, US Base Command, addressing real-world issues such as nuclear proliferation. I served as Officer of the Deck aboard the United States Carrier USS Enterprise, crew of 5,000, involved in combat operations. And then finally, I wound up in the beautiful city of East Greenwich in 2006. And I have currently one child already through school, so seven, and one in his last year. And at this point, changed careers, and I am now the CEO of a veterinary group, which I started with one practice, is now six. And we have 155 employees, about 20 associate veterinarians. So I have a long list of leadership capability, and I'm hoping to bring that to the town, which I think the most critical juncture in this town is municipal contracts which are upcoming, and certainly funding the schools to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's the turn of Mark Schwager.
Good evening. I know why you all love living in East Greenwich, because I love living in East Greenwich also. And I know why many of you are here tonight, because I'm here for the same reason. I'm worried about my town. Open Meeting Act violations, ethics allegations, a closed budget process, $1 million out of our rainy day reserve fund to balance our operating budget, that's never happened before. Excessive use of closed-door executive sessions, and excessive use and expensive and unnecessary litigation. We've lost, the Town Council has lost its usual conversation and consensus board with our school committee, with our town workers, and with the community. But we can fix this. By working together, we can bring on a new team. We need a team that can bring us back to open and effective town government, excellence in education, and a strong sense of community. That's why on November 6th, your vote is so important, and why I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's Mike Donigan's turn.
Hello, I'm Mike Donigan. I see a lot of faces I know in here. I've lived here 26 years. I've had five kids. I've been through the system here. So many of you from here know me. For those of you who don't know me, I've lived here 26 years with my lovely wife, Dr. Rene Donigan over there. We have five children. We're going through the system. We have one at the high school now, Go Avengers. I'm an environmental lawyer, practicing in Providence. I believe in public service. I've served over a decade here on boards and commissions. And presently, the chairman of the Planning Board in East Greenwich, responsible for the town capital budgets. We draft a lot of the laws in town. We're responsible for the drafting and implementation of the Comprehensive Community Plan, which is the blueprint for how we see our town developing forward. I never intended to be a politician. I'm not surprised I'm here tonight. But over the last two years, it's no secret to anyone here that we need some help. I think that my experience and training are a couple of things I can offer to help move our town forward. My three priorities, my first is an open, ethical government. The second one, which is very important, is to properly fund our schools. And the last issue I want to do is develop fiscally responsible budgets that don't run deficit, and lessen tax burden on our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it's Mike Zarella.
Thank you. My name is Mike Zarella. I moved here when I was 16 years old. I bought my first house on Brookside Drive, and now I live on River Farm. I ran two years ago, and when I ran, it was kind of exciting. I thought the town needed a little tweaking, but I thought things were really well. There were little things I'd like to do. I'm running this time. It's totally different. I believe the town is basically just short of disaster, what happened over these last two years. I was thinking of what I'm running on this time that I did not have to run on last time. Last time, I didn't have to worry about unfunded schools. I didn't have to worry about a structural deficit on the school side, as well as the town side. I didn't have to worry about the town's bond rating. I didn't have to worry about $600,000 to $1 million in legal fees for lawsuits that we just keep on losing. I didn't have to worry about ethical violations. I didn't have to worry about secret meetings. I didn't have to worry about our town, uh, workers being vilified. I didn't have to worry about lack of transparency. These are the issues this time. This time, I'm running for these reasons. Last time, the town was not broke. We didn't need to fix anything. Now we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Renew Engelhardt.
Good evening. My name is Renew Engelhardt. I'm a former 12-year member of the zoning board, and I participated in the 2007 R2 traffic study. I'm a former volunteer with East Greenwich EMA, where I met Bill Higgins, and I volunteered in many capacities in the schools, and as well as for my children, as well as outside interests. Many years ago, prior to moving here, I also worked as a virtual real estate, and virtual real estate as a bookkeeper. In the time that we've lived here, this town has entirely been represented by Republican Town Councils, many of whom I voted for. The demeanor of the prior councils has always been courteous, civil, and respectful. Above all, prior councils practiced good fiscal governance and by my ability to work with department heads and the school committee. In the two short years this council has been in office, East Greenwich has been involved in and lost numerous lawsuits, fired to let go several long-term employees, and raided its general fund balance. We are in danger of lowering our credit rating and no longer able to fund our town departments and schools in their necessary manner. Several town departments are understaffed, including the police and DPW. Tonight, we will hear the two incumbents and their running mates claim that the town has a spending problem, blame past and current employees, and claim $100,000 in savings from health insurance. What you should ask, and it is my number one concern, is where are the documents and fiscal statements to back up their claims? Ask them why the finance department under Ms. Corrigan and Ms. Stikman have not produced a year-end fiscal statement for 2017 and '18, as required by the charter. Ask why Ms. Stikman has not produced monthly budget reports, which the council used to receive under Mr. Isaacs, and ask them why we have so much secrecy. Thank you so much for the opportunity for being here.
All right. Next, we will hear from Bill Higgins.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the organizing parties to help put this together this evening, to the school staff and volunteers who donated at times, so that everybody could be here. My name is Bill Higgins. I'm a 34-year resident of the town, and a retired deputy police chief from East Greenwich Police Department after serving 25 years. When I retired, I looked forward to having my Monday nights off, and enjoyed that for several years, until about a year and a half ago, when I saw a red flag when Tommy Coyle was let go as a town manager, and they brought in Gail Corrigan, who in turn hired her business associate. I was also the town's Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. I also did the government surplus, and I was the grant writer for the police department, bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money, training, services, and disaster relief. I'm well versed in the town charter, town ordinances, and the town budget processes. I've sat through it and gone through it myself. There are five contracts coming up. I'm the only one that's sitting up here that has had experience, both on the union side as well as the management side, with the negotiations, arbitrations, grievances, and availability of practices. I, along with some of my other colleagues here, have been concerned about what's happened over the last, uh, last year and a half. Over the Meeting Act violations, Town Charter violations, ethics violations, this needs to change. The getting out fiscal house in order needs to be the top priority. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. This is truly a great night for our town. In fact, we're all here, united in our mission to learn about all of our candidates, because our town is so great. We all love East Greenwich. I love East Greenwich. It has led me to crisscross this town many times over the past several months. Our main topic of discussion has been, how do we keep our town great? How do we take the gift of our community that has been bestowed upon us and pay it forward? How do we ensure our continued prosperity? I repeatedly hear the same four collective goals in my canvassing of the town. Our neighbors tell me, number one, restore civility to our public discourse. Number two, maintain tax relief efforts. Number three, continue to deliver a high level of municipal services. And number four, nurture our top-notch school system. My pledge is to effectuate these goals. I want to serve as your Town Councilor for the next two years. During every day of those two years, please hold me to these fiscally responsible goals. I am honored by, and I sincerely appreciate, your support in getting me to Town Hall on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean O'Leary. Next up, we'll hear from Andy Deutsch.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this venue is very special to me, so I've been here a few times, from 1999 to 2003. It was generally for Saturday detention here at East Greenwich High School. You might see me at an Air Vant Act, and even to vote our new town manager back in November. So two years ago, I ran as a young, bright-eyed kid with a few ideas who had an unquestionable love for this town. You know, I talked with James Patrick Gorham last week. He said he could help. I still love the town. I had no idea what I was walking in for. I remember talking to my dad, who held his seat back in 1978. And he said, "Andy, I don't think I spoke for the first five months I was on there." And I said, "Well, you know, Pop, I think I had a very different experience than you did these last two years." So here we are today. We have some problems that we all know about. It was my first time as a counselor. In hindsight, we can all play Monday morning quarterback, and we all want one. We have a lot on the horizon, and a lot of these problems we didn't cause. But it is our commitment to solve these problems with the knowledge that we had to find. I apologize for any issue that wasn't addressed in the way it should have been done. We're all just trying to do our best for the town. We all love the town, and we're committed to solving these problems. And let's give everybody up here a round of applause, because people up here donate their time and volunteer. I got to push my daughter out my lap a dozen times to go to a meeting. So whoever wins, you guys are all winners, and I really appreciate your commitment to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sue Sianke.
Cat fighting has started already. Good evening. I'm Sue Sianke, and I am currently the Town Council President for East Greenwich. In 2004, I ran for school committee, because I was very invested and really thought that the schools were our shining jewel in East Greenwich. So in 2004, I ran for school committee. Our schools were falling apart. The next four years, I spent making sure that our infrastructure was properly addressed. And because of that, we renovated the high school, we renovated coal, and every single building, school building. Then I walked away. In 2014, Michael Isaacs asked me to run again for Town Council. I gladly accepted that, and I have been on the Town Council now for four years. I'd like to continue working on the Town Council. The biggest issue that we have is fiscal stability. It is insane to think that we don't have a pension problem here. In the last six years, our pension increase costs have gone up 50% from $3 million of real estate to over $4.68 million. That is a big issue. There are a host of other challenges that face every single municipality and governance across the country. Delivering services, lack of finance, managing staff, engaging citizens, forming new partnerships, and rapidly evolving technologies, yes, 5G is coming, and socioeconomic demographics. These are just a few of the issues that need to be addressed: pensions, fiscal stability, schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final opening statement.
Hi, I'm Karen Correnthal. I'm a 23-year resident of East Greenwich, and I am currently a learning disabilities teacher at the Hamilton School of Wheeler. I never intended to run for office, but after attending most meetings and seeing poor leadership and poor fiscal management, I felt a call to public service. We deserve to be represented by people who respect others, who can collaborate and cooperate, people who listen. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are bridge builders and who earn respect by being respectful. We need to heal the division in our town. I've prioritized five issues: transparency, good government, putting our schools first, economic concerns, and mutual respect. Number one, we need to completely clean house at the top except for Mark Schwager. We need to bring back comments by citizens before voting. We need to work with, not against, the school committee. We have unlimited wants with unlimited means, and we need to manage the two. While we work to reduce the tax burden, we need to create a fiscally responsible, transparent, and understandable budget. We need to work with the chamber to attract and maintain business. I've begun to explore bringing in solar to East Greenwich. I've spoken to Karen at the library to examine other areas of revenue. And I've talked to Rise Engineering about doing a free town audit. Lastly, with a new team in place, we can begin to restore the sense of community that has disintegrated over the past two years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. We now have a question for each candidate. And all the other candidates will have three responses that they can use to weigh in on a question that isn't directed to them. The questions have all been submitted by East Greenwich residents. They're in a hat right over here. Bob Simons is going to help me draw them out. And we will start with Mark Schwager for his first question. "After all the anger and mistrust of the past year and a half, what will you do to heal our town's big divide?" That would include addressing the relationship between the Town Council and the school committee.
If I'm re-elected to the, uh, to the Town Council, I'll make sure that the usual good-faith relationship between the council, the school committee, the town employees, and the public is reestablished. Those relationships have been damaged, and I think that we can repair them by making sure that we do not take the public out of town government. The public needs to be able to come to council meetings and have open comment early and often. We need to have the, um, the town meetings livestreamed and available by archive online for viewing. We need to eliminate ethics violations, over Meeting Acts, and get back to where we have been in the past. And East Greenwich requires a team to do this, so we need new leadership, and we need a new team, which can get us back to open and effective town government, excellence in education, and a strong sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, you would like to use your response.
So, Mark, I've seen the video that you posted about us having such a negative relationship with the school committee. I don't own anyone else's soul, but I'll tell you, I don't have an fairest relationship with the school committee whatsoever. What I'll tell you is this, I had a great meeting with Jeff Droznick, the East Greenwich Police Department, just to get an idea of what school safety is going to mean to the community. When we had the audit done, I made three phone calls, one to Jeff, one to Matt Plan, and one to Alexis Meyer, the same Alexis Meyer I nominated to be on the advisory board for our new town manager. This is the type of stuff that takes away from our town. We are neighbors. We are friends, parents, and to perpetuate the fact that we have this animosity, for the love of God, I let Jeff Droznick borrow my sound system for his daughter's bat mitzvah this weekend. That's what a neighbor does. Less politics, more people. Thank you.
Charles will start with your response.
I just want to say, from my entire career, it's all been about leadership, and forming teams, and getting people to do things they didn't necessarily want to do. And I believe leadership is something, you lead, you lead people, you manage things. So if you want somebody who's going to come out here, and I don't care what their agenda is, I don't care what their political persuasion is, we've got to be focused on accomplishing tasks. We know that we have to educate children. How do we get it done? And I don't care where the idea comes from. If it's a good idea, we're going to use it. I've had a long experience with this both in the private and the public sector. So if you want somebody who can bridge the gap, then please vote for Charles Calanan on November 6th, because I don't care who's on this council. I'm going to work with them. I'm going to work with that school committee, and we're going to make things happen.
I'd like to respond. I recognized Sean O'Leary before that. I'm sorry. You know, Andy, I think it's nice to have a good personal relationship with members of the school committee, and I think that's important. But the thing that's really important are your votes. Your votes are what determine your relationship with the schools, not your social camaraderie. And you voted to level fund our schools, and that damaged our schools. We had, uh, had promised providing services due to that vote. And you also voted to unilaterally change the operations of the school committee without their advice and their consent. The school committee did not know that in open, in a closed session, that we were voting to actually reallocate school employees, change the organizational structure of the schools, without their advice or consent. That was extremely disruptive, and that permanently damaged the relationship between schools and the town. So your votes are what count, and that's why we need a new town majority, so that votes are there to support our schools and have real change and collaboration.
Thank you, Charles. And now Sean O'Leary, your turn.
Are we on? Thank you. I certainly want to stress, as some of you are aware already, that civility is a mainstay of my campaign. I recently wrote an op-ed piece, which I encourage everyone to read if they haven't already. East Greenwich News was good enough to publish that just a couple of weeks ago. Among other themes, and Andy hit on this as well, we need to stress that the 13,000 of us are neighbors. We see each other on Main Street, across the playing fields. We all have to live together. And that also uniquely qualifies us to have a constant, open, and interactive dialogue, both with our school committee and residents. Yet another mainstay of my campaign and my prospective candidacy is to have that transparent government and have that open forum where we can all talk to each other, and we can learn your goals as a council and effectuate those. Andy and I are running together, which is a bit unconventional. That is a signal towards the harmony that even though we're not of the same party, we expect to work together. And that's the kind of civility you can count on for me for the next two years. Thank you.
Mike Donigan, and then Mike Zarella.
Hello? Hi, just to follow up, I too expect Sean and Andy to work together. So what you've seen Andy do, how you've seen him cast
So what you've seen Andy do, how you've seen him cast his votes, is what you should expect Sean to do. Look, 63% of our tax dollars go to our schools. The structure in Rhode Island is that the school committee is an independently elected body that has its own rights and responsibilities. The only way the town council... They come to us for appropriation funds. We can say no, yes, or give them whatever we deem appropriate, as long as it's not less than we gave them last year. But the only real way to influence the school committee and have any input into the spend is to build a bridge and have a relationship. What this council did and Andy voted for is to actually level fund them. They didn't hear them when they said they needed more money just to provide the basic education program to our students. They said no. So what happens? The school committee has its rights and they went and did their audit and they found that $1,200,000 a year is necessary just to meet the minimum basic education program requirements. The town council, I think, believing it would be rebutted, brought Dave Adden from the same law firm that represents us in the lawsuits against the fire department, to comment. Dave is very experienced. The take-home from Dave was, the audit didn't go far enough. So when they told the schools, "Sorry, no, we're not giving it to you," they came back. And if we don't build the bridge to have any input in the spend for the schools, we're going to end up with a Carrulow Act lawsuit against the town council and we'll all have to live through that.
We talk about good neighbors. When I moved to Brookside Drive, I had no kids in the school system. I paid taxes for, I think, seven years before I had any kids, because I was a good neighbor. I paid for Andy to go to high school. I did. After my kids graduate, I'm also going to pay for other children to go to school. I have three kids in the school system right now and I don't feel like my neighbors, this town council, has been doing for my kids what I did for them. They have cut the school funding, I have kids in the high school, there was no librarian. That's not being a good neighbor. A good neighbor looks at the children, whether it's their children, other children, they look at the children and say, "What can I do to help these kids?" Whether it's coaching, supporting the schools, being here for the plays that happen, being at the sporting events. When I get elected, I will be a good neighbor and I will fund the schools. Thank you.
My wife and kids were always there. They all went to the schools here, they all graduated from here. They all benefited greatly. The schools are our future and we can't forget that and never lose sight of that. How do you get this under control? You get the town manager under control. She's the one who's controlling the budget. She's the one who on February 7th sent a letter to the superintendent... Oh, I'm sorry, to Carolyn Mark, the chair, and the superintendent, basically with an ultimatum. Either you conform to the one-town plan or you're going to go back to pre-2005 funding. And that's how the relationship started this past year, this past budget season. This should never be allowed. You know, she's also rated our fund balance of $1 million. Now we're looking at a potential of $1.2 million that the Carrulow Act may mandate that we fulfill the obligation. So how do you get this under control? You get the town manager under control. And let's not forget, you know, there's been a divide in the schools in the town. Last year, not this past budget season, but the previous one, there was a lot of people that showed up for the first budget hearing after the financial town meeting was done away with. They came to ask questions, they came to be heard, and what happened? The call, the question was called and they never even were given an opportunity to ask their questions or get their answers. That's been a consistent theme throughout the past year and a half: asking questions without getting answers.
Sue Yankee.
Thanks. I think there's a lot of misinformation that's floating around.
Can you hear her?
Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me? The schools, after 10 years of operating under surplus, all of a sudden decided, not decided, but they said that they were having a structural deficit. We met with the auditor general, members of the school committee, members of the town council. We came up with a plan together. How do we fix this? The fix was a one-town plan. Stop operating in sidewalks. Join your finance department, your HR department, and your IT department. So far, the only thing that has been joined so far is the finance department. And speaking with those employees, they are very happy. To cross-train people, to use your people effectively, is very important. How do we get a structural deficit? When you enter into a contract that is $2 million off, that's a problem. It's not only on the school side. The town side also entered into a contract with the fire department that was $1.7 million off. That's how you start a structural deficit. You have to pay attention. There are five contracts that are being negotiated on the town side and three on the school side. You have to know what you're walking into when you start negotiating those contracts. It's the single most important thing that is going to happen in the town in the next year. Don't look at 2018, look what is going to happen in 2020. And as far as the relationship, I approve and respect the people on the school committee because I was a member of it. They are doing exactly what they should be doing, is fighting for every dime that they get. But that performance audit, that's for another day.
All right, thank you. All right, the next question. And we start with Mike Donigan. "Firefighter overtime has become a hot-button issue for the town council. What would you do to reduce it, or is it a good strategy to avoid paying salaries and benefits for additional firefighters?"
So I get the easy one? So first of all, Sue's comment about this is really important and we should pay attention, I would like to point out that Sue was the vice-chair of the town council that negotiated and signed that contract. We should have paid attention. So right now, we're going to have, we had nine firefighters that were injured on duty. And so that contributed a lot to the overtime. There are also some contractual issues that probably need to be addressed, including how many vacation days, how much, how many days off, which contribute to the overtime. The issue, these issues are going to have to be negotiated and we have to be cognizant of the fact that in Rhode Island, if we can't reach agreement with the fire department, we end up in binding arbitration. And binding arbitration doesn't go so well for municipalities. And so we need to have experts who will sit next to us negotiating these contracts to give us advice, not just what we would imagine like it seems the council does, like what is a fireman worth in some country that's not ours? What is a baseball player worth? You know, that's not how it works. I need advice on what are we going to face in arbitration? What are the highs and the lows? And I need to negotiate better than that. I can save the legal fees in lawsuits and binding arbitration and end up with a better deal than we have now. And that's how I would approach dealing with the fire contracts.
Thank you. Any response? Mark Schwager.
I think the fire contracts are really a good example of how our town council has really gone in the wrong direction. The council became, of course, as Mr. Donigan says, we identified problems in the contract. There were problems related to the overtime, but the solution was just counterproductive. We have been spending, I spent more time in executive session discussion of litigation about fire department contracts in four months than I did in four years on fire council meetings. The legal strategy that the council adopted was flawed, it was unsuccessful, it cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, it damaged our relationship with the fire department, and we're going to have to sit down and negotiate it. So the current negotiating team that we have in place will not reach agreement with the fire department. They are at loggerheads. The town has been demonizing the fire department, threatening, bringing them to court. We need a new team, a new negotiating team, to sit down with the fire department. So this is an example that I've seen that relates to our town employees, to our school committee, and to the community. And it needs to stop and that's why we need new leadership. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that the town walked away in December of last year from negotiations that they held with the fire department. They had come to an agreement to hire back more firefighters to reduce some of the overtime and yet the town walked away, for what reason we don't know, did not notify the union, and then went ahead and sued. The town has been pursuing over and over again a policy of suing, an unsuccessful legal strategy. And for some reason, they keep adding on to it, thinking that maybe this time it will work. It hasn't worked. It has cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. We don't know, as Ms. Yankee says, the $1.7 million of overtime, since we have not seen a fiscal statement from this town since April of this year. I don't understand how she could know that if no one else can see those figures. There is not a single, there has not been any calculations. We have not been able to see any of the actual calculations as to how they gave to $1.2 and $1.7 million. And finally, I think one of the bigger problems is that you have to have a relationship with the union, whether you like it or not. If you sign the contract and you already know import that you lost, you have to have a relationship. Certainly bullying at a, an aggressive tactic has not helped that relationship any more than it has been. So I completely disagree with that.
Thank you. Karen Corrithol.
Yes, thank you. "This current council is at war with people who clean out streets, put out fires, educate our children, and protect our property. At war with our mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, neighbors, and friends. Those are the people who stayed with my neighbor for more than two days while his basement was flooded so his family could be safe. This town council has gone to court to break contracts knowing that they would lose and the town has suffered in more than $300,000 in legal fees. Why? I have my theories, but I suggest you ask the current members. Our town is all fire all the time, but the firefighters are just one component to our $62 million budget and one part of our municipal government. Our town employs over 100 people and everything combined is 81.59% of the overall budget. Judges and common sense tells you, if you want to change the contract, do it during contract negotiations. I would not reveal what I want in the contract until we sit down. Everything's on the table. So let's have a good fake negotiation with, yes, respect and compromise. Hire a competent lawyer to negotiate. I have confidence that we can negotiate without maligning time employees, yet looking out for the taxpayers." Thank you.
Look, what people should recognize is the purpose of unions is to serve its members, which is nothing particularly wrong with that, that's what they should be doing. But they don't have your interests at heart. So if you look at this organization, which is $1.2 million in overtime compared to the city of Warwick, which has 220 firefighters to our 36, half of which ours are officers, which makes no sense to me in an organization that's basically almost one enlisted guy for every officer. And if anybody believes that the union was going to give this up without a fight, they were kidding themselves. Because they come in with professional negotiators, they're going to come in there and they're going to work for their best deal, no matter what. And you have to be prepared in any negotiation to bargain from a position of strength and also to walk away when required. And they have to believe that you will do that and I will do that. And you also have to have a plan in the event that you're not going to come to an agreement. And you're not going to know that until after this contract expires, which I believe, you don't touch contracts. Once they're signed, they're signed. But we're going to get a good deal next time or there won't be a deal.
All right? Who was it who wants to respond? Andy? No. Oh, Bill. Bill Higgins?
I don't think anybody on this panel will disagree that there has to be some correction to the overtime on the fire department. That is a number that's out of act and I don't think anybody's in this room here. I think that it needs to be a full review of all expenses. Right now, we're paying the equivalent of $135,000 a year to a fire chief who's working four days a week and we're paying for his lodging while he's here because he lives out of state. That needs to stop, that needs to be corrected. Of 39 cities and towns, you can't tell me we can't find a retired fire chief here in the state that we don't have to pay for his lodging. He will actually work a five-day week. The town manager's applied with requiring employees to get an independent medical evaluation before coming back to work. That's unheard of. You do that when people want to stay out and you want to get them back to work, not after their doctor has cleared. Once their doctor has cleared them to come back to work, the liability falls on that doctor, not on the town. You would have an action. So it's not just simply, you know, the firefighters are out to raid the draw of the municipality. I also question the numbers coming out of the town manager's office. In May, when she presented the budget, May 1st, the budget showed that the fire department had a $200,000 surplus. In June, when you looked at that same budget that was presented by Gail Corrigan, it showed a $200,000 deficit. That's a $400,000 difference within a month's time. I've done with the budgets, I've reviewed the budgets, I've worked with the budgets. That's on call board. It's either something's wrong or she's incompetent and needs to go. Thank you.
Sue Yankee.
First, I'd like to say that Dr. Schwager and I both signed that contract. As a member of the town council, and it was $1.7 million off, that's where the figure came from, Renew pointed out. We both signed that contract. As a member of the town council, we are a policy board. You put people in place and the people that negotiated that contract, or as our town manager, our then-solicitor, and our fire chief and our finance director, all of those people are no longer here. That is leadership. Seeing someone that takes you down a path that is not sustainable and you have to make a change. And we did make that change. It had to happen. As far as lawsuits, yes. Being a lawyer, the last thing I want to do is spend money on attorney's fees. I just don't. But when there are things that happen in town, and one of the things that happen is we are spending way too much money on our fire services, way too much for a town of 13,000 people, 3,000 rescue calls, and very few fires. The third thing that has to happen is, we want to make sure, and I have said it over and over and over again, pension liabilities and make sure that our firefighters are healthy and well-trained. Our firefighters are actively pursuing litigation against us, which we have to defend because they do not want to get physicals. They do not want physical fitness tests. I think it's pretty important when a firefighter shows up at your house that they know what they're doing and that they're physically fit and well-trained. It's good for them, it's good for their families, it's good for the town. To not have that is a disservice to everybody in this town.
All right, thank you. Sean?
Thank you. "With respect to the firefighter overtime, there's clearly an issue. Two years ago, when I was just watching the 2016 candidate forum today, no one was talking about that issue. Now we are. I think we owe the current council some appreciation for pointing out the issue. Now, our job going forward is how do we address that issue? Most critically, we have a key opportunity this upcoming spring to renegotiate that union contract. A common theme I've been hearing from everyone here, and I think we can agree, is that it's important to have experts on the town council who can help shed their expertise as to how we most successfully negotiate that contract. I happen to be a local litigator. I spend a decent portion of my time both prosecuting and defending cases. For my very good clients, I spend a lot of my time keeping them out of litigation. That's precisely what I expect to do for this town. I also happen to be an arbitrator. So I think I can lend some expertise to this process. We need to communicate with all parties. We don't want anyone to feel so disenfranchised that they feel compelled to bring a lawsuit. We want constant, open, and interactive communication. As a counselor, I want to be at that union negotiating table and I would encourage my other four fellow town counselors to do the same. Thank you."
Karen Corrithol.
You know, I'm listening to all this and I've attended most, I've attended almost all the meetings. Ms. Corrigan wanted to change the firefighter contract to a 56-hour work week. She did that...
She did that without any fiscal impact study. She did that knowing that we would go to court and we would lose, which we did. I actually spent some time researching it. You know what I found? There was no savings of money anywhere. I also found that Cumberland did a three-month study, and they found also no savings of money, and it's not good for the firefighters. So, had she not done that, we wouldn't have been in litigation. Yes, we need to look at the contract. Yes, the overtime, the overtime is too much. I don't agree with their numbers, and since we haven't had a budget in six months, we don't know what the numbers are. But let's do it in the right way, in the legal way, without maligning our town employees. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our third question goes to Mike Zarela. State law mandates that cities and towns have 10% of their housing deemed affordable. East Greenwich is 4.6% right now. How can we reconcile that development pressure with the cost of providing high-quality town services, especially when it comes to our schools, which are already at capacity?
Because I got this question. That is a major problem with the town. We definitely don't have enough affordable housing in the town. Currently, I believe there's some, before the planning board, but the problem we have is we're at 90% of our taxes come from residential properties. And everybody has kids in schools. So what we need to do is, we need to get affordable housing, but what we need to do is have some of it be senior housing. Because if you have senior housing, what you do is, you do catch up in the war and get enough people here, get to here at 10%. However, you're not putting such an impact on the schools. Because if you keep on bringing families in that send three, four kids to schools, our schools are basically about to overflow. We don't have enough room for the students. We'll have to build new schools. So what we need to do is find ways to meet the affordable housing without bringing in new students. In other words, senior housing, single housing, young professionals. You can't have affordable housing with these seniors and young professionals. I think that's the only way to do it, without putting such a burden on our taxes that it becomes unaffordable. Right now, I have three kids in the school systems, and I've seen the schools where basically there is no more room. We will have to build more schools if the town continues to grow. So, like I said, we need to have affordable housing, but try to keep it for seniors and young professionals. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next question? Okay. We move on. Renew Engelhardt, this is your question. New England Tech is an important and growing institution in East Greenwich. What would you do to maximize the benefits for the town and the residents of New England Tech being here?
I am a huge fan of New England Tech. I like to say that my youngest son, who barely graduated from high school, is an honor roll student at New England Tech. He actually would have benefited from a vocational program at the high school, except there was no program to be offered. I do think New England Tech actually offers a lot of opportunity for the schools in the town to work together as far as either co-opbing vocational programs between the high school and New England Tech. There are certainly a lot of kids. I think the number that I was given in the high school was 20% of kids do not know what to worry of colleges from high school, which is a lot, if you have a graduating class of 200, it's about 40 kids. And then, the other thing I've often thought is, why isn't the town being more cooperative with New England Tech? They're not just a source of revenue and the payment of lieu of taxes, but they're also, they have an engineering program, they have a lot of programs that the town could really benefit from. I think that it would be an excellent opportunity for the town to either explore doing an internship that would benefit the town as far as, in the engineering department, if you do, whether it's in criminal justice, or the police department, or the fire department, those are areas that we can certainly work together. I also think that New England Tech should be brought to the table as part of the town. They are a huge stakeholder in this town at this point, and I, they're going to grow. I mean, they're planning on opening another dorm at some point. I think that it would be an excellent opportunity to bring them to the table and to have them be part of the discussion.
All right, thank you.
So, when Brooks Pharmacy left, we took one of our most valuable pieces of property, and now we get really no taxes from it. We do get payment of lieu of taxes, but nearly not what it should be. If I get on the council, and one of my other council members, I think we need to approach New England Tech and see what they can do for us, and what we can do for them. In other words, we need to try to get some more money out of them. I've coached EGBA, I coached AGSA, I'm using all the numbers, but I coach soccer, I coach basketball, I coach football. How many games we've played at New England Tech since I've been coaching? Zero. They have fields. They should be using the fields. We should be able to use those, but we don't. New England Tech needs to have a better relationship with the town. And I know when they come before the planning board, they're going to want to put more dorms up, they're going to want more water usage, and that's the time we need to negotiate. And say, if you want more dorms, and you want more students, and you're going to use more of our police, and you're going to use more of our fire, you need to contribute more money. Because at the end of the day, the more money we get from doing the tech, the less money we have to put on the burden of our taxpayers. And they live in this town, just like we do, so they should pay their fair share. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next question goes to Bill Higgins. Relations between town officials and the firefighters are combative. That being the case, how do you plan on reaching an agreement with firefighters for new contracts?
It's simple. You treat them fairly, you treat them with respect, and you compare their salaries with those of other communities, like communities. You don't compare communities like, oh, we're going to compare us to Central Falls, or we're going to compare us to other, this, that, and other communities. To treat them fairly, you know, we want to retain the employees that we get. We don't want to just pay employees just to have employees. We want quality employees who want to stay here. We've lost some quality employees, like Wayne in the Department of Public Works, Aaron and Sealy Services. You have to pay something, you have to be fair. And to be fair, you should be able to work it out. However, what you have to do, you also have to look to be fiscally responsible, is compare their contract with that of like communities, and make sure that it's not out of whack. Obviously, like has been said here, the overtime is out of whack, that needs to be addressed. But there is so much more in the fire department that goes along with that. Like I said, keeping firefighters out of work, that keeps them, the overtime going up. We have two vacancies right now that are not being filled, so those shifts have to be paid for with overtime. So yes, the overtime budget goes up, you know, there's one salary goes down out of those two people. But, you know, you've got to treat them fairly, you've got to look at the contracts, you've got to look at like communities, you've got to do a cost-by-cost analysis and say, all right, this community is getting, you know, 10 days vacation, you know, they're making $50,000, whatever the number is. And see where we stand in comparison with other communities. We have to be fair. And like Mike Donigan said, they can go to arbitration. You know, I know somebody else said, we need structural changes. And they're just going to walk away and say, we'll see you in arbitration.
All right, thank you. Next question is for Sean O'Leary. Everyone complains about parking on Main Street. The valets have made life easier for some businesses, annoyed others. How should the town address parking issues? Should it consider building a parking lot?
That's a great question. Anybody who's watched Andy and I's videos, and I'm quoting Andy here, will say, we should address that issue not soon enough, and never. The issue of parking on Main Street, and again, I watched not only the 2016 candidate forum, but also the 2014 candidate forum today. That issue came up at both candidate forums. It's clearly an issue that needs addressing. Built into the question, I think is a good part of the solution, which is that we could use a parking garage. And, nobody probably wants an unsightly parking garage next to them. There was some mention two years ago, when the current council took office of doing the study with respect to parking on Main Street. I think even a particular site was identified. That, once we move beyond some of the ranker of the last two years, is yet another example of the progress that we can and should make. We need to be very friendly to our businesses, not only on Main Street, but throughout town. We need to show both local folks and potential businesses and investors that we are a business-friendly town. In order to do that, we need to work very closely with the vendors on Main Street, and I'm confident, just like all of our other issues that we're talking about here, we can arrive at an equitable solution for all of our residents.
Renew Engelhardt, your response?
I sat on the zoning board, and some of the, a lot of those parking issues came up in front of the zoning board. Most of those restaurants actually have assigned parking, they choose not to use it. And the only way that they connect is they, people end up calling the police department. And most of the police department are charged by the town council to actually find, or discipline, or figure some way to discipline the restaurants and the valet. That's not, that hasn't changed. The town council has, has the, they should be active. That, that's their issue. That is something that they can do right away to actually fix that. Not going around the planning department, which actually has a plan in place to talk about parking issues going into the future, and not for just a couple of counselors to do on their own. It is actually something that Lisa Bourbonnet at Planning has in her, she has a file on parking issues, and can address it with the council. And if the council wants to build a parking garage, there are a lot of steps they have to go through. They can't just suddenly decide that they want to build a parking garage. Where are you going to put it? Who's going to be affected? You have to have open meetings. That is not something that just can be done because we need more parking. There really is, if the council wants to act now, they can actually start finding businesses for their valet, and their, you know, for crossing in the middle of the street and all of that, right now, if they really wanted to.
All right, Karen.
I have to sort of laugh because I've brought up parking at least three times at the town council meeting. And frankly, it hasn't been solved. The other thing is, in the budget, we do not have a parking enforcement officer. And some of you may say, wow, that's terrific, we don't get any tickets downtown. We also don't get any revenue. And I find it particularly annoying when I go to the valet and the valet parks across the street. And other people have expressed the same exact thought to me. The valet shouldn't be taking up streets on Main Street. They should be having a parking garage. I surveyed in Federal Hill, every single valet, and guess what? They all have a parking garage. And it may be even one of them had one a mile away. So our restaurants, I want them to have the valet, but do it in the right way, and do not take up street parking spots on Main Street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Andy Deutsch, this is your question. Do you support using the town's fund balance, also known as rainy day fund, to avoid raising taxes as was done for this fiscal year?
So, support it, voted for it. The logic behind it, I can explain, I haven't explained it for a few people. So, we had an opportunity, and our town manager presented us with several options. 1%, 2%, 3% increases. And, coming into this year, we're negotiating contracts, and taking that money puts us into a better negotiating position for all of the, all eight of those contracts. It is not an ideal situation. We certainly have come under, you know, have scrutinized the school for doing a similar thing. It is not an ideal situation, but holding this line while we're figuring out what we're going to do, I think was a proper small step backwards in order to take a giant leap forward with these upcoming contracts. Thank you.
Mike Donigan?
So, I was at all those meetings, and the different tax proposals that were presented, they definitely, you know, impacted our revenues and our ability to pay our bills. So, I think, we've seen the videos from the town council members, actually, and talking about how we held taxes. Well, that's sort of true, right? They held our taxes. However, is it really holding your taxes if they take it out of your savings? Anyone can do that. I can promise never to raise taxes for 100 years, we just borrow it and put it on a credit card for you. That's not responsible. That's not even fiscally conservative behavior. Okay? Is it, if I'm holding your taxes, if I don't fund the schools, and I court a car rental action for a million to a year, or did I just put it, kick it down the road another year? Am I holding your taxes if what I do is, I fund zero into the OPEP pension account? The whole story was, we're not the people who kick it down the road. Under Mike Isaac's, we paid money in those accounts. Under this council, we paid zero. So, holding taxes and just putting it on a credit card so we have to pay it next year, you know, draining our rainy day fund, by the way, threatens our bond rating, which will cost us more money. None of that made sense. That's not fiscal conservative, conservative, and we shouldn't support that.
All right. Next question is for Susie. Does the town have a spending problem or a revenue problem? Would you support developing a long-range plan to look at ways to increase revenues?
Okay. The town does have a spending problem, and not a revenue problem. If you look at how much we are taxing our residents, and how much we are expecting them to pay. Over the last 10 years, our school budget has increased from $25 million to $34 million. We have increased the amount of money that we have given our schools, $55 million. We don't have an increase in students. We don't have a large increase in population, but our spending is going up substantially. The second part of the question was...
Would you support raising revenues, figuring out a way to raise revenues?
So when people talk about raising revenues in a government, a government doesn't make anything. The only thing the government has the ability to do to get revenues is to increase taxes. We need to look, not only at our fire department, but each and every department in the town, to see how we're spending money. The reason why the fire department was highlighted was because our budgets were increased substantially. Our previous fire chief said, we just didn't budget enough for our overtime. Well, that's not really the case. It was, we reduced the number of floaters, and that was negotiated with the fire department, with the experts that we had hired, perhaps as they were the wrong experts that we hired there. They are not the only department. You have to look at everyone. We did a desk audit on our finance department. So, we have to look at how we spend each and every dollar, because it is your money.
The first thing was about the, the education money. I think that the reason, one of the reasons that the school budget has gone up, and I have to admit, that is not something that I spend a lot of time looking at, but I, there were a lot of mandates, there was a lot of special ed requests. Those things you cannot deny. It was a basic right to education for a lot of those kids. But one of the things is, you're talking about revenue. Revenue does not come from constantly cutting manpower and services. Revenue comes from actually increasing business, bringing business here. There is a huge opportunity to bring business here, and I don't know that this council will ever reach it. This, we have, I, like, we go back to New England Tech, we go back to that corner of Route 2 division, there is an excellent opportunity to build a walkable area there for mixed-use development, and to increase revenue by bringing in more businesses. You have a new, you have a growing student population, you have a growing retirement population in this town. We have not even tapped into some of the needs and expectations that they have, and also, I think we have, we can really increase revenue, we don't always have to look on Main Street. We have other areas. We have areas on Post Road, and we have other areas on Route 2. I don't know that increasing revenue is only just by cutting, constantly cutting people and services, and that's not, to me, that's not increasing revenue, that's just cutting
Yeah, so, Renew, I actually agree with you on some of that stuff. So, one of the ideas I had two years ago was to create a better synergy with the student-teacher population at New England Tech, and create a better synergy with the Chamber of Commerce and the businesses in town. You're right, we do have an opportunity there, and if we could put together a strategic plan that is in line with what they have, it would be a win-win for everybody. I've also heard people talk about raising the commercial tax rate, and some people support... support that. That's not something I would support, I feel like because they have the same rate we have here as residents, that attracts a lot of business, that Route 2 corridor, the medical buildings and things like that, I think that's a real attractive thing that, he's kind of says that a lot of communities don't have, is that they actually have the same tax rate. And I wouldn't want to see that go away.
All right, thank you. Our question now goes to Karen Corrath. Would you ever support increasing taxes to the 4% level allowed by state law to improve our schools?
Over the past two years, this council has used misleading and deceptive information and scare tactics, and failed to put the numbers in context. They tell you that you're saving money, but the revenues have been flat and we've lost essential services. And I was present at the meeting when the car, and says they will go short time without certain essential services, but that can't last forever. So, they achieve, they say they achieved no tax increase, they've level funded the schools. Funny though, we haven't seen a budget in six months. And the flashing red light is that they've taken a million dollars out of the cost, out of the budget. So, the talk about raising the schools, I don't want to raise taxes, I'm a taxpayer too, but we need to explore other avenues of revenue. We need to be a model for special education that could attract students from all other states. We need to examine our relationship with, with New England Tech. We need to renegotiate contracts properly. Let's sit down with the department heads, set priorities. If we want to do a costly project, ask for bond issues so the town can vote on it, but let's work as a team. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sue Cianci, yes?
Thanks. Yes, 2018 marked the first time in 30 years we didn't have a tax increase, that we lowered taxes twice. Think about that for a minute. We lowered taxes twice. When you talk about going in and rating the rainy day fund, it's a strategy. It's a strategy, we are not going to lower our bond rating here. We have begun the largest task of consolidating our finance functions and eliminating two separate and siloed functions in the town. We went to lean process, our employees did a fabulous job in order to attract new businesses by lessening the amount of time it does to take permitting and everything in place. They've done a terrific, terrific job with that. We went to a paperless environment for the town council now, dues its agendas and everything, everything is not done by the, by our employees anymore. So there's lots of different ways that you can look at how we're going to get revenue, but Andy's right, you don't want to go in and ask for an increase in commercial property tax rate for our commercial businesses, because you will not attract them. In North Kingstown, the tax rate is 18, ours is 23 per thousand. So it's, it would be more convenient for businesses to go to East Greenwich, to go to North Kingstown rather than East Greenwich. So how do you make it more attractive here? We've got a lot of great things in town. We're centrally located, we have the water, we have lots of wonderful restaurants and small businesses on Main Street. So these are ways to attract people to come live, work, and play in East Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
This is not the time to be rating our rainy day fund. We are in a booming economy, which means things are going well. We should actually be putting more money into the rainy day fund. It's the opposite. At some point, we're going to have an economic turn-down, we're going to have problems with the schools, we're going to have some major issue. And the less money we have in the rainy day fund, the less likely we are to deal with that. We need to be fiscally responsible. In a time of prosperity, this is the time that we should be trying to make our town stronger. The more money we have in the rainy day fund, the better our bond rating is, which in turn saves us money in the long run. If we start paying a higher percentage on the bonds, then we will pay more taxes later on. The end of the day comes down to this, do you want to pay for the schools? Do you want to pay for the services that we have? I heard someone say that the town doesn't create anything. It does. It creates our students, creates our future, it creates safety, it creates a lot of things. I feel safe in East Greenwich. I feel good that my kids are going to go to good schools because they go to good education. They helped create my student, my children being good students. When they go to colleges, I'm going to be glad they went to East Greenwich. I don't want to raise our taxes at all. I want to try to see if we get money from New England Tech, I want to get money from the waterfront, I want to get money from the businesses on Route 2. But what I will tell you, I will not be fiscally irresponsible. I will raise taxes if they need to be raised, however, I will choose not to raise them if we can do it otherwise. Thank you.
Sean O'Leary, did you want to respond?
The question was, do we raise taxes? The answer is no. Not unless it's the absolute last option. It is our duty to exhaust every single other possibility before we raise all the residents' real property taxes. I listed the top four issues at the outset of the forum. The top two issues that I've heard from all residents are, restore civility, number one, and number two, a very close second, do not raise our taxes. We've all heard about our wonderful town. We have an extremely unique mix of wonderful residential neighborhoods, a vibrant downtown and Main Street area, a university, and large areas available for commercial and business occupation and development. This is all true, and we need to tap into those resources. We have many intelligent and involved residents. I'd like to have all these factors harnessed under one economic development umbrella. The Newport Chamber of Commerce and its Connect Greater Newport Division offers an excellent example. There was some late mention here of the waterfront, once again, that's an issue that's been discussed over the last two to four years, and once again, due to a lot of the rancor in town, the progress that we should make on that issue has not been made. We need to do that over the next two years. We need to tap into other sources of revenue and not raise taxes.
Mike Donnegan?
So we've heard the narrative that we, over and over, right, at least three of the candidates up here have said the following thing, that I'm not sure where that came from, but we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. Anyone who runs a household, a business, knows we address both. Okay? We're not going to cut our way out of the mandates to educate our children. It's not going to happen. Look what we did. We said no to them, and now they come back with a million two and a car rental action. We don't have the ability not to, to choose not to provide the minimum basic education for our children. We simply don't. Pretending we do is folly. It costs us more money in lawyers, and we're just going to pay the same or more, and we've lost any ability to influence it. Same thing with the fire department. We have to negotiate with them, but we can't be completely, you know, off track, because then we'll go to binding arbitration and lose there and spend a lot of money. So it takes a reasoned approach. I agree we want to lessen the tax burden on residents, but we can raise revenue, and we should, without taxing the residents. New England Tech should be paying $2,420,000 on an $88 million assessment. We get $650,000 as a payment to low. If they want wheelboard doors, they need our sewer capacity. We can get that. Same thing for the commercial tax rates. Okay, across the street, let's not go to North Kingstown, in Warwick, Outback Steakhouse pays $23,000 for the building, what's in it, just like you pay for your house. Texas Roadhouse, directly across the street, pays $31,000 and $41,000. Texas, Outback is not leaving if you raise their taxes to just below and still make them more competitive. They're there because of the conflict of Route 4, Route 2, and I-95 and the population. They're not leaving. We can protect small businesses and still do that. We need to do both, generate revenue and control taxes.
Thank you. Last question is for Charles Callenander. The school district's recent program audit found the schools were underfunded by $1.2 million this year. If elected, how would you propose going forward from here?
Now, I've read that, that program audit several times, and one of the things that came clear to me on the front side was that 13 out of the 38 items had TBD and budget line items, which is to be determined. So, no budget that I could ever propose, you know, in business or certainly not in the public sector, without identifying how much money is actually there. So if, from the premise, I don't exactly buy the number to begin with. I certainly, in reading the report, understand that our schools are really good, they can only be better. As an organization and a planet, you can't make better by performing the audit. So when Mr. Abbott came in and said, "We can go far enough," I 100% agree with him. The point being is that that audit is flawed because the numbers aren't correct. You can't, you can't say that, you know, 30% of it, we don't even know what it is for. So, what we need to be doing is looking at, you know, where we can save, where we can, in all these other areas in the municipality, to get money through our schools. And that's what I'm here to do.
All right, thank you. That concludes our question. We have time for a lightning round question. I think just one. And this works this way, we, you each have 20 seconds, up to 20 seconds, to answer this question. You can probably do it in a word or two, but... We should start with, I'm lost. Mark Schwager? Okay. We'll start with Mark. Would you keep town manager Gail Corrigan?
This one, you can hear me? This one? No. I'm voting against Gail Corrigan three times. And she's taking us in the wrong directions as far as our contracts, our schools, our central community, she's the wrong person for this job. But getting a new town manager is not enough. We need a new town council. It's the people who hired her and rehired her who need to be changed.
We're going down the road there. Mike, Mike Donnegan, your turn.
Same question. So, if I'm elected town council, I'll not vote, we need to replace Gail Corrigan. I'm not saying this because of all the ethical violations or the fact that she's going to be found guilty of the ethics violation for hiring her partner. You know, it's not that. Look, she's an accountant, she was hired for a very specific purpose by this council. She doesn't have the managerial skills we need, she will never be able to negotiate with our unions. We can hire an accountant, we need a town manager.
All right.
Give a little plug to my favorite coffee shop, Gail Corrigan, Icely Show.
I would vote no. I'm Gail. She didn't actually negotiate any contracts in Central Plaza or CCA FD, the receivers did. So, no, she doesn't actually have negotiating skills.
Bill Higgins? All right. Would you vote to keep Gail Corrigan?
I am the person who filed the ethics complaint against Gail Corrigan. So that's a yes. As did Renew. She has not only been in my mind unethical, she has been deceptive. She's been deceptive to Dr. Schwager, and he asked her if Gail had been identified and had its salary and contract. She said no. The truth was, she had signed an agreement with her two weeks before. Plus, there's other, other deceptive things that she...
Sean O'Leary?
I think the original question was, we need to start with, and what we need to start with is also the title of my op-ed, these that I've already mentioned. Civility redid, East Greenwich style, let's lead. That's the linchpin for all the progress that we desperately need to achieve for all of you. And with respect to the town manager issue, would we relieve her of her duties as a town council? Not at this time.
All right, thank you. Andy?
So I've had the privilege of working with Gail, and I would support her, at least through the end of her contract, and then we, as that ends, we have to look at something, you know, every year. I think that wasn't a bad move for us to put her in on a term sheet. I think getting behind these contracts, looking forward to 29, you know, 2019, and moving forward is what we need to do, and I think Gail is in the right position to do that. So I...
Turn this up. You support her.
I would support Gail Corrigan. She has uncovered a number of issues in town, from $100,000 savings in our health savings account, to a $50,000 loan given to a nonprofit that the town council is either aware of or know about. She also uncovered things in our fire contract that no one on the town council is aware, not the previous council or us. So she is an employee at will, if things should change, then the council has to look at that.
Karen Corrath?
Gail needs to go, as well as the lawyer and her partner. They've shown poor leadership, they've created a toxic atmosphere, and they've been fiscally non-sound. And the more important thing is, we have to pay her a port, resume who's been here less than two years, six months severance. I don't know where that ever came from.
Charles Callenander?
I recognize the fact, no, Gail's not warm and fuzzy, but when the information is accurate, I don't care where it came from. I have a lot of employees that are, you know, in management positions, may not be warm and fuzzy, but we got figured, we know where the bodies are buried now, and we have to deal with it. Is she a long-term solution? No, she's not. But right now, we keep her, and we solve these problems.
All right, thank you. That concludes our lightning round. It's time now for closing statements. We will begin in the original order, that means Charles Callenander, you start.
First of all, I'd like to say this, you know, as a, as a professional leader, I've seen a lot in my career, and I've never run into an organization anywhere, whether it be municipal, whether it be private, whether it be public, that you couldn't find ways to do things about it. There's been a lot going on here in the last couple of years that has made things very difficult, and there's a lot of people with vested interests that things don't change. Well, they have to change. Because I want my kids to be educated, I want this town to thrive, I want to be a good steward of the town. We've been in here since about 1665, and I think it would be an awful reality that if we were the ones that let it all go, and let it go bankrupt. We can't allow it to happen. We have to look at this town from zero-based budgeting, everything will be looked at, everything's on the table, and if we can achieve that, I think we have a longevity here that is going to take us well past us and our, and our subsequent generations. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark Schwager?
If I'm re-elected to the town council, I'm going to bring the community back into town government. I'm going to make sure that the rules and regulations of the Open Meeting Acts and ethics are crystal clear to the council. I'm going to make sure that our budget process is open and transparent, and we will not take money out of our emergency rainy day fund to balance our operating budget. That is financially malpractice. This town now needs to move from confrontation and litigation to conversation and cooperation. And we've had that in the past, and my main effort would be to rebuild the relationship we've had in the past with our school committee, our town employees, and the public. When you are in the voting booth on November 6th, ask yourself what kind of town council you want. Are you happy with the way your council looks now? We can do better. So I ask for your support, and remember, governing on the town council is a team sport. So I ask if you support my colleagues, Karen Corrath, Mike Donnegan, Rayne LaHara, and Mike Zarella. We are dedicated to public service and work well together, and will deliver for the town open and effective town government, excellence in schools, and a strong sense of community that we deserve. Thank you.
Mike Donnegan?
So this evening, I heard from 10 candidates for town council. It doesn't break down, though, seemingly into 10 different visions for our town. It's two. On November 6th, you're going to have a binary choice. The choice is to stay on the path you're on, which apparently the strategy was to spend down our capital reserves. I know our bond rating is threatened, because I have the email that you're under the planning board from bond council, saying if you do that, the bond... from bond counsel saying, "If you do that, the bond agencies won't like it unless you can somehow justify it to capital expenditure." So that's just not true. We, if you choose to go forward in a different path, we will build a bridge with the school committee and try to manage the claim that's coming for a million two. We will do it with an eye towards actually meeting our children's educational needs. Wherever they are, the high performers, the special needs children, and those in the middle. That's our community, and that's our job. And we will manage both the expenses and the income side responsibly. We're not gonna look at bankruptcy. There's not gonna be a slideshow that we're Central Falls because we are not. That is a narrative that's just false. Sit with Seth Magaziner and talk about what steps are needed to get into bankruptcy. That's ridiculous. It's not even a possibility. So please, on November 6th, you have a binary choice. If you want to change the way things are going and move forward in a positive direction with a collaborative, civil, and integrated team, I ask you to make that choice for me and my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Zarela?
Question is, do you like the way the town's going? Do you like the way this council's doing things? Do you like the way Gail Corrigan is doing things? I heard Gail Corrigan is not warm and fuzzy. Her math is fuzzy, her ethics is fuzzy, her transparency is fuzzy. I don't like the way this town is going. She has brought us unfunded schools, structural deficits, numerous lawsuits. We have paid, and by the time it's done, we haven't seen the bills yet because they're holding back the bills until after the election. Millions of dollars, I bet, in lawsuits. This town is not going in the right direction. If all you care about is a tax cut, then maybe you should keep the councils in there. If you care about the future, you care about doing things right, you care about what our taxes will be in the future based on... I mean, I heard today that it's a policy to, it's a strategy to spend all our savings. Well, that's not a good strategy. I would not go that way. We need change. We need to go back to the way it was. We need to go back where people could walk into the town manager's office and talk to him face-to-face, and they could go to the town meetings, and it's enjoyable, and everybody's shaking hands afterwards, and it just seems like a beautiful town. I want my town to be like a normal Rockwell picture, and it's not like that anymore. It was when my first got here. Thank you.
What do you think, LaHara?
One thing is, if you do not agree with the school audit on any other thing, the one instance that it actually is true is that it states that the finance office, the consolidated finance office is in disarray. They could not produce even the simplest fiscal document when it was requested. We're a great town. We're at the crossroads of 2495. We are located on the water. We have, we're minutes away from the airport and train. We have a great, great community. I am staying in this town, even though my children are done with the schools, because we do enjoy our community. My husband and I are besties in this community. I don't understand the idea that we would squander our financial future and squander the relationships that we built with the departments and people who live and work in this town simply because of a flawed fiscal policy that, by the way, you can't even see because those documents cannot be produced. I really find that the, and like Mike said, if you're only concerned about the tax cuts, and perhaps these people are the people for you, but if you're interested in about rebuilding this community and repairing those relationships, I urge you to vote for me and all my fellow, uh, Democrats up here.
Thank you. Bill Higgins, your turn.
After I retired, I thought I was done, you know, getting involved with the town as far as going to council meetings. And I found myself coming back because I cared so much about the town. I cared in the direction which it was going, and I thought it was going in the wrong direction. People like that, you know, I've heard a lot of people complaining about the way things are being done right now. Well, I've come up with a plan. Things to be changed immediately, and issues could be addressed within 30 days. Immediately, it's about time that the town council take control of the town manager's actions. The tail wagging, the war, the dog needs to be reversed. The residents of this town deserve to be treated better. What has taken place over the past year and a half, let's go back to the way we've always done things regarding bringing back public comment at the beginning of the town council meetings and keeping one at the end. Answer questions, not only during public comment, but on a topic of concern to the residents. But the questions asked, right, not only during public comment, but on a topic of concern to the residents prior to a vote. Let's bring back the use of the finance committee that we once had in 2004 and charge them with exploring potential revenue opportunities. Let's start reposting the jobs from the past year and a half, which began out, they're having to be gone through the normal posting, application, and vetting process. The media return to duty for any employees who've been cleared by their doctor from an illness or injury, and fulfill effort requests within the amount of time, least amount of time possible. I've had to wait 30 days for five pages. That's unacceptable. And I have more for the fight of honor.
Sean O'Leary?
Thank you. Over the past several months, people have asked me invariably, "How is the campaign going?" The answer is that the campaign has been a tremendous experience in so many ways. Mainly because I have the opportunity to talk with so many of our great neighbors. That tremendous experience continues here tonight with a consummate example of our great democracy. You've heard from 10 of our neighbors looking to be among your five next council members. We've heard many different viewpoints. We've heard most essentially about the council's main function, the spending of money, and the clear need to be fiscally responsible. My takeaway is hopefully the same as yours. If you share my goals for East Greenwich, then please honor me with your vote. That is, please vote for me if you want to, number one, restore stability to our public discourse; number two, maintain tax relief efforts; number three, continue to deliver a high level of municipal services; and number four, nurture our top-notch school system. I shall spend the next two years, hopefully as your counselor, effectuating these goals to the best of my ability. Town residents shall have the opportunity to step into a voting booth three weeks from tomorrow. I'm thrilled to say that I'll be on that ballot. Because I'm running as an independent, I'll be the last name on the ballot. Please save a little bit of ink so that you can vote for me, and I may serve as your town counselor for the next two years. Thank you.
Andy Deutsch?
Well, so thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. You know, I think Mike Donigan's right. There are two clear choices. This off-of-their-head, gotta-get-rid-of-Gail attitude. So let's say you guys get rid of her, day one of them. First meeting in January. That's great, and the budget's due 60 days later. And it would be naive to think that that would have implications with the finance director anyway. We would literally have a rudderless town. No, yeah, sure, we could get one of the department heads to fill in, or... You know, as you know, we run under such scrutiny to find a town manager and do a due process. We'd be under scrutiny for that. And then furthermore, you have guys like me asking you guys tough questions. And now, Mike, I'll agree on you on one other thing. You are a real good company. Because you've got the union lawyers, the union members, and two other unions that aren't even in town donating to your team. So you are a great company. A vote for us is vote, it's still conservative policies that are gonna have not just fair and balanced negotiated contracts from the town employees and the town that are gonna provide a long tethering, but beyond the three years, it's gonna be five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. Thank you.
All right, Susie Akin?
Okay, it's often said, you're either part of the problem or part of the solution. I chose to be part of the solution. I did not spend my time on the town council, not voting yes or no, just recusing myself. I voted, and I took hard choices to vote. So what much change is underway? The past two years have been difficult. There's no saying that it hasn't been difficult. But what do we need to do? We need to work with all our unions to formulate affordable and sustainable labor contracts. They are not current. We need to think of very different ways to deliver services. And that concludes outsourcing and regionalization, and that's something we've begun talking with all of our current towns, North Kingstown, Warwick, Coventry. What can we do together to save all of our residents and all of our towns some money? And let's not fool ourselves. The Pension Reform Act of 2012, we contributed $3 million more dollars a year. Six years later, we're at $4.68 million. Unfunded liabilities in the state has increased to $1 billion. Our stark mugger has doubled. But we are asked each and every year to contribute a higher percentage so we can fool ourselves and raise our taxes 4%. We will not be benefiting the schools. We will not be benefiting the town. We will just be contributing to the pensions we have owed. So as Andy said, there's a clear choice. Vote for the Democrats. They're all backed by the unions. Or you vote for the fiscal, the conservative.
Okay, well, I was gonna say something totally different, but now I have to address this. First of all, nobody, nobody on this stage, that's any of the Democrats, have taken one penny. I have not taken one penny from anybody that will come before this committee, and I can say the same for all my fellow people. Secondly, they talked about getting a budget in January. You gotta be kidding me. She hasn't produced a budget in six months. Next, pensions. We haven't really talked about pensions. When Michael Isaacs was president, and I really don't know him at all, he introduced himself to me, 2004, he started funding the pensions. We did not pay into OPEC last year, the fund balance. Since Michael Isaacs, now it has been cut in half. Why is that important? Because it affects the price we pay for bonds and affects our power. Now, let me go to my statement. I canvassed around the town. People are not happy. We need to have people who can cooperate, and we need to bring this town back together. We stop needing to, we need to stop being in the paper for the wrong reasons. All people should work to be able to work together with civility and respect. If I'm elected, transparency will return. The voices of the citizens, your voices, will be heard at town meetings. If you have a concern, I want to hear about it. I'm a Democrat, but we don't have all the answers. My greatest strength is I want to talk to people, hear their opinions, listen to their concerns, and make decisions on what I believe is in the best interest of the town and not my party's ideology. I am not naive. I know it will take hard work. But we've assembled a great team, and we all ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our candidate forum. I want to thank everybody for coming out, the great audience. And also, I'd like to thank the candidates for being here and point out that all 10 of them tonight managed to cooperate and share the working nights so that everybody could speak. Thank you.